And I will welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, January 25th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where justice stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Joe Bardas?
Here.
Shiloh Dolan?
Here.
Lisa Kempner?
Here.
Greg Patterson?
Here.
Daniel Petrowski?
Here.
Julie Stern?
Here.
Mark Richardson?
Here.
Marty Smith?
Here.
Kristen Kapalinski?
Here.
If you have a quorum.
Okay, next up is approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Could you call the roll, Megan?
Yeah. Bardas?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Petrowski?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
That brings us to the November 23rd, 2021 meeting minutes. I did not have any changes. Did anyone else have any changes this evening to the minutes? No? Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Could you call the roll, please, Megan?
Bardas?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Petrowski?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have communications. I see we have some items on our desk this evening, some copies of Planning and Zoning News, which I think we're down to the last issue.
Yes.
And then we also have some core, some items related to one of the items on the agenda this evening. Is there anything that I'm missing? Oh, okay.
Yeah. If there were extra copies and I put them at your desk?
Okay.
Just so that you would have them. Some people get their whole paper packet.
Yeah, okay.
That's just part of the packet.
Okay, yeah, it's just part of the packet. So we have the Planning and Zoning News. Enjoy the last issue, everyone. And nothing else via email or anything, correct?
No, nothing else via email.
So that brings us to citizen comment. If there is anyone who would like to comment on a non-agenda item, we'd ask you to come forward at this time, state your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And just a reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion. Is there anyone who would like to comment on a non-agenda item this evening? No? Okay. Any email comments on non-agenda items?
No, no email comments.
So I will close citizen comment, and we will move on to old business first. The first of those items being the DDA Design Guidelines. So you gave us a really thorough memo, Megan. Thank you for doing that. Do you want to give us a really brief overview here? And then before the Planning Commission discusses anything, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants to comment on this item.
Thank you. I have to give also credit to my colleague Ben Carlyle, who contributed to the memo as well. Based on listening to your meeting in October, I mean, in November, we kind of isolated four different questions that came out of it that seemed to be directed towards us and asking for some opinions. One was, have we implemented Design Guidelines in other communities? Did we use a checklist? What other methods? Quite frankly, we've never used a checklist in Design Guidelines as a firm at Carlo Wartman. What we typically do is to implement Design Guidelines that were in the DDA Design Guidelines that were adopted. Per zoning is to have a design section in the zoning ordinance with requirements and guidelines. And often, that's coupled with a form-based zoning approach to help to get those buildings where you want them to be within the corridor. We can use a checklist, but in conversations today with some staff here talking about them, I think that what you might want to do is take more of an approach that has been put here as an example that Troy's used, to take those things that you had in the checklist and to make those standards that you judge the site plan by, and then require the applicant to respond to that. Also, one of the things that we heard in your conversation was, what are the musts that should be required? And what are the things that are optional? And we base those on what's most important to the community. And so while we could go through that 83-page document and give you some ideas, we felt that that was premature without having a conversation with you at the Planning Commission level about what's really important. Is it materials? And what type of materials are used? Is it what is going on in the sidewalk, where things are? Is it that the windows and the doors or the architectural features keep the context of that block? And it might be different from, it might be different on the southern end of Coolidge than it is in the middle of the downtown 12-mile section. So without that conversation, we really felt like it was premature to talk about what the musts were. Because that really needs to come from you and then have the political will to implement those as you go through site plan through site plan. In terms of what things that are optional could be incentivized, again, you, those are easy to achieve from an administrative process. Just what you want, what you have, what you want, make that easy. So make that a principal permitted use, or make that, have less hoops to jump through. If something that you want, but you don't need, from your conversations, I heard maybe someone said the sustainability things, provide an incentive. So if you provide that, you get a little more signage. If you provide this, you might get a little, you get a parking brake. Those are the type of things that, you know, where you can have some give and take. In terms of what's in the checklist, or the DDA Guidelines, it's already been required by the zoning ordinance. Working with your zoning ordinance now for a month and a half, there are some things that are required. But you've got the smattering of districts through that area, and they all have different regulations. So it doesn't seem worthwhile to spend that time without isolating, again, what's important and what do you want to require, and then what would you want to incentivize. So in terms of overall advice, you know, from our best practices is to have both guidelines and standards in the zoning ordinance in terms of design for this area. And the standards are what you absolutely want. Those are your musts, and the guidelines are what you would like to have. Sometimes those guidelines can come with an incentive. Sometimes you can just put them out there as a guideline, and we'd like them. And that's something that communicates to developers or to applicants what you're looking for. But providing those architectural standards in the zoning ordinance and making the community, making the community address those, the applicants address those as part of their application, so that they can say, this is how we meet that standard. Also, graphics are worth a thousand words. They're very useful. Consider just different design requirements for different areas. If there's different things that are important in different places. And also, put the standards. You can put guidelines someplace else, but the standards need to be in your zoning ordinance so that they're enforceable. If they're not there as, if they're not there as a standard and as a requirement, staff can only, staff and consultants can only twist arms so much. And then also, if it's not there and you, there's pushback, then somebody may be later at this Planning Commission level or at City Council level will say, well, why are we requiring if it's not a standard? So again, whatever is that must, have that in. We attach some examples for your consideration from other places where we've worked. And then, you know, I, we would, we would recommend maybe scheduling a separate Planning Commission workshop to discuss this more in detail, to just have a solid hour of, you know, what's important, what's not, and then to go from there. Also, when I was, again, talking to some people today, it might be also beneficial for each planning commissioner to fill out a short survey based on that checklist of what you feel is a must and what you feel is, could be incentivized, or we really don't need that. And then we could take that and talk about that in general. And that way, you have some private communication to share that. And then we can aggregate it and look at it. And we did some things like that in the master plan with the steering committee when we were looking at kind of hard decisions.
Okay. So that is a lot to think about.
Yes.
First, I want to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the Design Guidelines discussion. No. And we haven't received any emails or anything?
No.
Okay. So let's just dive right in. What I'm hearing from you is that we kind of have a couple decisions to make. And you're probably looking for a little bit of direction for us before we jump into a work session this evening. I liked the Troy example, so I feel like that's kind of the minimum, right, that we could do. And then when we go a little bit farther, going up to, you know, a full-blown code rewrite of three different districts is probably like the Cadillac of the plans, of the options that we could take. There's a lot to weigh there in terms of how fast we can get that turned around, what the political will is to do each of those options, which I think is a question mark a bit. And I certainly don't want the Planning Commission to spend a lot of time drafting something that ultimately wouldn't get approved. And I probably, I think I can speak for everyone. We don't want to waste our time there. So I think the first question we have to discuss is, do we want to lean more towards something like the Troy example? Do we want to do a full code rewrite? And do we, are we even able to do that in terms of logic constraints and things like that? Or do we want to land somewhere in the middle?
I can start.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
So I, so here's where I think, when I was going through, like, our later, our next two issues today, the townhouse is on 12-mile, that's that one. It's allowed in our current ordinance. The Design Guidelines say residential only above business. And then our future land use map says that area is ripe for any kind of multifamily, right? And then when I look at Coolidge, it's kind of like the same issues, but opposite, right? Our ordinance doesn't allow multifamily. The future land use would allow multifamily, and the guidelines allow townhouses. So I think there's some degree of, we really need to sit down and hash out what these should look like. We know we need a zoning rewrite. We've done all this work with the master plan, so it's all still fresh with the community and with everybody else. I think work sessions or a subcommittee or something to start going through this and being able to, like, come to the city and say, yes, we still want heights at 40, you know, setbacks. No, we don't need them. Yes, you know, in some places, there are those kind of things that clash between our ordinance and the Design Guidelines. And I think there's enough of them that it would make sense to sit down and kind of start rewriting those zoning, because we know we need it. We've talked about it for five years. And it's like, we keep going, well, we can't yet, well, we can't yet. But maybe if we just start doing it, it will start to happen.
Well, this would be, I mean, if you, I'm just going to throw this out there, but if you were to do all of the districts along Coolidge and 12-mile, I mean, you've done a good chunk of the ordinance at that point.
Yeah.
I mean, single-family isn't going to change a whole lot, so, and that's the majority. I feel like that's almost all the parcels in the city, then. Okay, so you're leaning more towards some sort of substantial code rewrite?
Yeah.
Or ordinance rewrite, I should say. Okay.
I agree with Lisa. It seems like if we're going to just start creating guidelines that we can't enforce or nobody can enforce, what's the point? We might as well get the code up to where we need it and just take it on. We've said that after the master plan. That's what we would do. So that's my thought.
I also agree. We spent so much time on the master plan, and there are some legitimate loopholes in the zoning, things that need to be addressed. And we've talked about the parking, you know, we've talked about landscaping a little bit. I think it'd be time to look through the zoning ordinance and really tear it apart a little bit and rework it.
Okay, Mark?
Just, as usual, I have questions. I want to be clear in what we're being asked to do here. Are we being asked, are you asking us to rewrite the zoning that pertains to the DDA areas? Is that what we're trying to do, come up with appropriate implementing language for the guidelines?
I think, so, I think what's being asked of the Planning Commission by the DDA is that the DDA Guidelines are in some way enforced through the zoning ordinance. And so you've got a couple of options to do that. You could do the example, you could do the example of Troy where you just list out standards that you want them to meet. And those could be as simple as what were in the checklist. Just rewriting those so that they're, you know, a little clearer, that they're in ordinance language, zoning ordinance language. And that is site plan standards for that overlay district. And that you would do a lot then, and that the DDA Guidelines would be something where you would use that as a reference, so that they, and that would be enforceable. That would, what that would involve would be a lot of time with applicants in front of you. And when that happens, sometimes it's difficult for them because once you get plans together, it's a lot of times hard to review it back. So you don't necessarily, you could pick one area and then do a full form-based code for that area. Maybe it's just the downtown area that's called out in the downtown plan and the master plan. And do something that's like a form-based code there, and have that be a pilot, and then go for it. And we've had communities do that. Or you could do the whole thing. It's just the long, the bigger the project, the longer it's going to take.
So I take it, then, you're not, you're not criticizing the existing guidelines. You're searching for a way to apply them?
Yes.
Or you're asking us to come up with a plan for applying them?
And what was difficult from where we were sitting is, we didn't necessarily know what was important to you. What's the, what are the things that, in terms of, you asked, what are the musts and what are the likes? And that really should come from you.
So I have a question about the Troy example. Is this, these refer to design standards. The word standard, does that mean that this, that these are part of the Troy zoning code?
Yep.
Enforceable?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I looked through some of them, and I'm having a difficult time understanding how you get around subjective decision-making. You know, it's an enforceable standard to foster a lasting impact on the community through the provision of high-quality design, construction, and detailing, develop buildings with creativity that includes balanced compositions and forms, et cetera. So whatever we do...
So you're saying, what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, whatever we do, I mean, you're kind of asking us to nail down some principles that can be enforceable, but, but whatever we do, we can't get around the exercise of judgment. And if you look at the existing guidelines, that's, it's replete with similar language to Troy. I don't really see much of a difference between what we have in this excerpt from Troy, except ours is like 80 pages, 80 pages long. And we don't want to include that all in the ordinance lock, stock, and barrel, I know, but...
And I...
I'm just, I'm searching for...
Great.
The architecture that you're, you want to achieve here.
Right, and so, again, that goes back to importance. So in Troy and then in other places where we've worked, that subjectivity in the standards is important to that community, because...
I just need to interrupt for a second. We're getting a lot of buzzing from like every time somebody gets like a text message, or I don't know, it's not going around in the room.
Probably all of them.
Making sure like nothing's overlapping. Sorry, it was like that enough. I needed to just jump in. So if you have, like, want to put your phones on like airplane mode?
On airplane mode.
Just like every time somebody gets a text or a phone. Sorry.
So what I think we're trying to decipher is whether we want to have something that's, you're right, Mark, much more subjective than a prescriptive layout of building setbacks and parking requirements and things like that. So do we want to live in that gray area that gives us a lot of wiggle room and would be much faster to put together? Or do we want to go something that's more prescriptive, that gives, you know, a detailed explanation or a list of requirements basically to applicants of what they need to include? And also, you know, we'd like you to consider sustainability elements or whatever else we might add in. Do we want to maybe go somewhere in the middle where we pick out a few things, like the big things? Setbacks, parking requirements, you know, the things that really shape a site design, but not necessarily get into building materials?
I mean, and I think we almost have to, right? Because there are some things that our ordinance isn't going to allow right now. Even if we say, this is how we'd like it to look, we're still limited by some use. We're still limited by some language that says, you know, there's no setback allowed unless it is this. So I don't think you get your desired results if you're ignoring that, leaving that part of the zoning alone and just dealing with how we want it to look. Because I think both are good. I think we want some flexibility, but I think we also have to address some of those issues.
One of the things I know that we thought was really important in the development of the Design Guidelines, which also a lot of time went into that, is the transition from some of these more mixed-use concepts to adjacent residential developments and making sure that there was proper buffering and screening. So maybe we come at it from a middle-of-the-road approach. Maybe there's a list of, you know, a dozen items or whatever it might be that we say, you have to provide screening and a buffer. You have to have such and such a setback. But that, we also bring in the Troy concept of saying, we'd also like you to consider and include and address how you've fulfilled these other obligations. And they're going to be, they're going to be gray and subjective and...
Right, yeah. And some, in Troy, some places have a form-based code that goes along with this, and some places don't. But every single person, every single design that comes through, I think, except a single-family residential has, a single-family residential home has to address these. And so, and that makes the designer think about those things as well. And they usually will have opinions on what means creativity. And they might disagree with you, but again, then at least you're having the discussion and putting it out there.
Yeah, some, some of the sections in the Troy, I'm dealing with it right now. I have to call Brent tomorrow. These are somewhat nebulous, and that's fine. But in a lot of the things in Troy, in some districts, as you discussed, it gets very particular of what you can and cannot do. You know, whether you're a, they get into building forms and street sizes and property sizes. It becomes a formula, and it does get very particular. I don't know if we want to get that particular. We don't have layers of, of, of property, say, along Big Beaver Road. You know, there's the, the fringes of Big Beaver Road. There's something happening behind that, and there's something happening behind that, which is usually some kind of a residential, whether, whether it's single-family or multifamily of all different kinds. I don't think we have all those layers. We have our commercials district, and then mostly single-family. So, but I just wanted to say, this is a good start, you know, something like this. But Troy does get very particular in some of those zones, as you were mentioning.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it does get confusing. And I think we want to keep it simple. We have a simpler situation here. So, but if we have a certain district, wherever it may be, that we want very particular items, we can do that.
Maybe we should do that survey you're talking about, and all of us list the things that we feel are important and see, see if we all land on the same things, or if we're all over the place, or... Okay.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, Marty. I think we probably want to focus on, on the big items, uses, setbacks, things that really determine, you know, how a site starts and where it goes. And then the littler things, the more fun pieces, we kind of are, have as a more subjective standard. Did you have something to add?
Well, I was just going to say, we were talking, we've some, brought up buffers before along the, separating the back of the commercial to residential. No, that's probably something that should be very specific in the ordinance.
Agreed.
It's in the Design Guidelines, too, with all kinds of...
Yeah.
Graphics, and we talked about it in our master plan with all kinds of pretty pictures and things. But that's something that is very important.
I agree.
And that should be ordinance law as opposed to suggestions. That's just an example.
Yeah, I think that's a great example. So it sounds like, from what everyone's saying, we're going to land somewhere in the middle. Not totally subjective, but we're not detailing every little thing either. And I think you're right, Shiloh, that it makes sense to go with the survey option and for us to each pick out, you know, the five most important things or something. Some way to kind of narrow it down a little bit, so everyone's not saying, well, bioswales are most important to me. I mean, I don't want to get into that kind of detail. But if we could do like a high-level type thing and then work trap this and kind of go from there, just so we have some prescriptive guidelines in the zoning ordinance and then allow for some flexibility, too.
So can I suggest we take the month of February to do the survey, like, in the next two weeks? I would bring the results back to you at your regular meeting, and then maybe we'll look at March for the first, the second Tuesday in March as a workshop?
Yes, we can do that. Can you give us, does everyone know if they're available that second Tuesday in March?
It's March 8th.
Yeah.
No idea.
International Women's Day. Off airplane mode.
Oh, I'm busy.
I'm busy.
I have no idea. Maybe we can all verify that tomorrow.
Yeah, we can all...
Maybe, Megan? Throw an email out tomorrow, and that double-checks that we're all getting, and we had an issue before you were here. Everybody wasn't necessarily getting emails. And maybe we can respond, and that solves two problems with one email.
That's a good idea, Marty. But I think that sounds like a good plan.
There's one idea.
So at the February meeting, Megan, are you thinking you'll just kind of quick, brief report back?
Quick brief, brief, ugh! Quick, brief report back on survey results so that you all have them. And then we can maybe preview how we would do the work session? Get a little feedback back and go from there. But I do feel that you will have at least probably two site plans on that Planning Commission agenda.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I think having the survey results for us to kind of mull over is good. I don't know that we need to discuss them until we really get to the, to the work session. And if we need additional work sessions, that's always a possibility or an option, too.
We used to do it all the time.
I know, that's what you guys said.
Fifty percent of the time, we'd have work sessions.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on then to new business. And the first item is PRZ 0121. This is a proposed rezoning of several parcels on Coolidge. Whenever you're ready, Megan, to give us an overview.
So there are rezoning of four parcels, which right now, two duplexes sit on. So four parcels, four dwelling units, but two buildings. In your packet, you got a, either an electronic version or a larger version of three, of actually six parcels. actually six parcels. The one that's southernmost, the applicant owns, and is looking in the future to perhaps do a multifamily development along all, along all three block faces facing Coolidge. As I mentioned, so, and this is a rezoning from Coolidge to, the Coolidge District to the Gateway District. In terms of land use, again, there's duplexes that are on the sites, but there's also a duplex to the south, and that's under the same ownership. Retail and office across Coolidge to the west, single-family to the east, and then office across Cambridge to the north. When you look at the zoning, the subject parcels are Coolidge District, to the west across Coolidge, so the block faces facing each other is Coolidge District. East is R1D, north is Office District, and to the south is the Gateway District. And when you look, that Gateway District goes across, across that block face linking up with that, with Gateway District that goes all the way down to 11 Mile. I mentioned in the review the intent of the Coolidge District and the intent of the Gateway District. And they're essentially the same, in that they're designed to provide pedestrian retail uses and services that will supply day-to-day convenience, shopping, and service needs on the premises for people residing in the adjacent residential areas that carry, cater to the needs of a larger consumer population. The main change in the intent with the Gateway District is that, that says the Gateway Districts are located as the entry points to Berkeley. And when you look at the uses between the two districts, they're essentially the same. The Gateway District allows slightly different principal uses with a greater range of repairs, like radios, televisions, vacuums, and have more restrictions on stacking spaces for drive-out facilities.
Get rid of that language.
They're, they're, they're not quite the same, there's just a little slight difference. But they're markedly different than from what's written in the master plan, in terms of the intents of those districts and where they're supposed to be. So if you look at the master plan, which was adopted in November, you'll see that everything that is on Coolidge is Gateway Corridor. And then to the east, it's Single Family Neighborhood. And the intent of that Gateway Corridor is future, is future land uses to improve function, invest in value and aesthetics of these corridors as mixed-use walkable places. And in that, they added, so presently, under both zoning districts, upper-story residential will be the only type of multiple-family allowed. And the applicants put it out that they would like to have a multiple-family development here. But multiple, multiple-family buildings aren't allowed in either zoning district. But the zone, the master plan says that this is something that we are looking in the future to add that use to these areas. Also, if you look at the zoning plan, you'll see that the Coolidge District is associated only with the downtown district, the downtown future land use. So the Coolidge zoning district is associated with the downtown future land use, and that stops at Catalpa, from 12 Mile to Catalpa. The Gateway District goes all the way up. And so it's, what the master plan is asking for is a change in the, in the way that Coolidge District works, and that Gateway District to also go up further. And so that was one of the reasons that, when we get to recommendations, we were feeling like this not only, there's, there's, there's not a lot of difference between the two zoning districts, but in terms of implementing the master plan, it does, more so implements the Coolidge District actually than the, than the proposed Gateway District, since it's taking that Coolidge District off, where it's now envisioned to only go down to a certain area. In terms of rezoning procedures, I think I've, I've given you the background of where this has come from. But, so, the Planning Commission holds a public hearing, you make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council is the authority to take final action. There are review considerations in Section 138585, and that you, as a body, need to make written findings of fact to submit to the City Council. I'll go through those, if that's okay? And then with the, some, along with some analysis that we provided in the review, just hitting highlights. The first standard is existing uses of property within the general area of the property of question, in question. So we said the subject parcels and the properties to the south are currently used as two-family, and should note that that's a non-conforming use in both the current and the proposed zoning district. The properties to the north and the west are retail uses as principal uses, and those really fit with both of those districts. The existing parcels really don't sit and fit in size and intensity in terms of other land uses in this area of Coolidge. However, two-family is always an appropriate buffer between single-family and a busy road. The second standard is the zoning classification of the property within the general area of the property in question. As we, you know, there's properties to the south that are zoned Gateway District, and again, there's not substantial differences between those two zoning districts. So it would be compatible with surrounding zoning patterns. The sustainable, the third standard is the sustainability of the property, suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification. It would be suitable, but again, there's not a lot of difference between the two. The number four is the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including changes, which have taken place in its present zoning classification. The only real change that we can highlight is that Lasallete is in the process of becoming a multiple-family adaptive reuse. That's not that far up the corridor, and would likely change what's going on on Coolidge, and have some effect. And finally, the objectives of the current master plan for the city. And as we discussed, that would be consistent with not only the future land use map, but the description of the Gateway future land use designation, the zoning plan, the vision for South Coolidge area, and the recently adopted master plan, and specifically how to implement the zoning in terms of the Coolidge District versus the Gateway District. Our recommendation is the Planning Commission consider recommending approval of the rezoning. And we listed five points that could be used if you decide to go in that direction as finding of fact. And would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is the applicant here this evening? Is there anything that you wanted to add to that? If so, can you step up to the podium and state your name and address?
Good evening, I'm Grant Jeffries. I'm an architect with Five Eight's Architecture in Ferndale. I've been, worked with Wayne on a couple of projects now, and he, you know, hired me to kind of guide him through this rezoning process as a first step for what we know is going to be a multi-step process for, to just to align the lots with the recently adopted master plan and future land use map, and get them to be consistently zoned with the lots to the south, which he also owns. So pretty straightforward, the duplexes would be, or would be, continue to be used as duplexes for the time being. And, yeah, just kind of position, position ourselves for some future development, and I'll let Wayne introduce himself as well.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you all for hearing us tonight, and thanks for your service to the community, and a very big thank you for the re-work you did on the master plan. We waited, you know, patiently watched in that process, my name's Wayne Wadika, by the way, before we decided what we potentially would like to do with the property. We would like to have a consistent zoning between the parcels that's consistent with the future, or the master plan that you've all adopted for the city. So it's our intent to come in with a project at some point in the future that is a project we can be proud of in the city, not have to ask for rezoning later, really understand the boundaries in which we can build a good project in. It's not a, it's not preset, we're not saying today we're going to build, we want to be ready to build something when it's, and have our property zoned properly and ready for it in a consistent fashion with the master plan.
Thanks.
Be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, this is a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this agenda item? No? Okay. And did we receive any emails?
No.
Okay. So I will close the public hearing on this item, then, and turn it over to the Planning Commission for discussion. So this would be a straight rezoning to a district that doesn't necessarily prescribe to exactly what the applicant has in mind, but hopefully will in the future.
Correct.
And this is a recommendation to council?
It's a recommendation to council.
So who would like to begin discussion on this, or who has some thoughts on this potential rezoning?
A quick question.
Go ahead, Marty.
Where's the southern boundary of the DDA on Coolidge?
Um, the southern boundary of the DDA goes all the way to 11 Mile.
Okay, so this parcel's within?
Yes.
Potentially, the guidelines apply to this parcel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is in compliance with the master plan, which is always a key thing we look for as part of a potential rezoning, and whether or not to recommend approval. We certainly want the rezonings to match the future land use map. So I think this makes this pretty straightforward.
I do have a question about that. I guess, so the future land use map for that area, right, if we were to go forward with that at some point in the future, already encompasses all of those properties. So I guess it doesn't go against it, but it doesn't go more for it than it does, right? Because...
Well, right now, the future land use map, and correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, does not match the zoning.
Correct.
Right.
What, right, I mean, well, yes, right? Because we have the multiple different districts in there.
Correct.
But what would be the Gateway Corridor isn't necessarily the exact, the same as what the Gateway District, right, we have right now, right? It'd be a much different monster in that.
Right, so there would be, I would hope, some substantial changes to the Gateway District to make it match what's outlined in the master plan.
Right, and then it would include the Coolidge District as well, right? So that whole
We would have to change that, too.
That whole thing would end up changing.
Go ahead, Megan.
There is one other variation. So there's the future land use map, and then there's the zoning plan. And that's the table that's at the end of the future land use chapter, and it says, this future land use category associates with these zoning districts. And Gateway associates with Gateway and 12 Mile and a lot
Part of 11 Mile.
A lot of different districts, but not Coolidge. The Coolidge District associates with the downtown future land use category. And that's what I was trying to get at, is that by, by changing it from Coolidge District to Gateway, you're actually implementing the area that's envisioned for Coolidge by taking that part off, and so that it's not south of Catalpa. So digest that. And then also, what we'll need to change, if you truly are implementing the future land use map, is the intents of these districts and how they're written. Because the intent, and also, note that your Gateway District is also at, right now, it's down by, it, it's down at 11 Mile in Coolidge and kind of goes up, but it's also at the intersection of 12 Mile and Coolidge. And that does, that Gateway District allows larger parking lots now, and so when you're talking about those DDA design guidelines, it really, those are actually, those match the least. And so, while it's a change to Gateway, it really, if you're looking at the master plan, what it's implementing is where the Coolidge District should be, because it's removing it, and it's removing it from the spot that's not envisioned.
You're consolidating the Coolidge District. I guess my question is, looking forward, is, is there a likelihood, based on the master plan, that there will be any incompatibility with a multifamily development? And the, the Gateway, the zoning contemplated for, for the Gateway District? In other words, looking forward, we're, we're looking at a potential use which is potentially compatible with the, the likely zoning of, of that area, correct?
Correct. In the master plan, it says that that area should be zoned. It looked at all the uses that are in that zoning, those zoning districts, and said, multiple family, if it's not there, should be part of it.
Okay.
And that you're intending to make that change later.
Well, I, personally, I, I'll anticipate I'll be voting yes on this. I, I, I think we all know those duplexes that are there now, I think probably if they were replaced with something we would approve, it would result in a upgrade to the area. And we've mentioned compatibility with the neighbors, we, we need to be always aware of that. But it's multifamily now, and all we're really talking about is making it into a more modern, a better multifamily location, I think. So, even though that's not currently allowed, so I'm thinking I'm going to support this, this request.
You've got to realize, Mark, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
That, that if we rezone this, and this isn't a negative of the rezoning, we're talking multifamily, we're assuming multifamily, but any of these things can go in there. It may not be ultimately multifamily.
Correct. Yeah, I, I get that.
And I think everybody understands that. When it, so, so there are, you know, once the, once the zoning is there, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be rezoned, but once the zoning is there, all these things can happen. I don't know if they're going to put in a commercial skating or a big classic skating area. These obviously need some rewrite, too, so that's on our list. So I just want everybody, if they don't already realize that, anything here can go in.
Right, but there are no dramatic differences.
No. And we're all thinking the same thing, it most likely will be multifamily housing of a different kind. Whenever we go through a rezoning, I always try to think of what negatives there are to do the rezoning. I honestly don't really see anything. We're consolidating, we're cleaning it up effectively, looking at the allowed uses in the two ordinances, if you wonder why we have two separate zones. So, and there's a third one, 12 Mile isn't much different, we'll be talking about that later. So if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll make a motion.
I would say go ahead.
Anybody else, before I spout off here? Okay. Um, I got to find it. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of PRZ-0121 to City Council, recommend approval to the rezoning.
Would that be based on the, the findings of fact?
Yeah, based on the findings of fact, I can read them if you want. Do we have to read them into the record?
I think you could just say, as outlined in the staff review.
Okay, as outlined in the staff report, thank you.
I'll support.
Does anyone have any further discussion on this rezoning? Megan, could you call the roll, please?
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Patafsky?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Good luck.
Good luck, gentlemen at council. Would this be on the next council meeting, just for their benefit? Or would it be, just, I just want to give them an idea.
I, I have no idea.
Okay.
This is my first time here.
That's a good answer.
I actually think our ordinance says it needs to be at the next council meeting.
So stay tuned for additional guidance, but shortly.
I will check and let you know tomorrow.
Okay, have a good evening.
No, you're fine, don't worry about it. I feel like I'm asleep.
Okay, we're kind of cruising through items here, which I think is good. So we have one item of discussion left, and this is PSP-0122. And this is before us as a sketch plan, which I really would encourage more people to come forward with a sketch plan.
Yeah.
It is a great idea, and we're happy to discuss this tonight. Megan, do you want to give us a brief overview?
Sure. Mr. Stocked met with myself, the city manager and DDA executive director, to discuss feasibility of multiple family development at 3737 12 Mile. to discuss feasibility of multi-family development at thirty-seven, thirty-seven, 12 Mile. He had a variety of different concepts, and, um, I encouraged him to come here. Immediately after that meeting, I found the sketch plan option in the zoning ordinance and thought, "Perfect." Um, it will be on the agenda, it will have its own item. Really, um, the one thing I wanted to highlight for you is that, um, this is zoned, this site is zoned 12 Mile District, where the front and side yard setbacks are subject to footnote N of the Schedule Regulations, which says, "No setback shall be permitted unless the Planning Commission finds that the proposed setback shall be developed as a defined plaza, outdoor eating area, or pedestrian space." The applicant is presenting townhouses, um, which, in my experience, needs a little bit of a front yard setback in order to be a defined space, um, to give residents privacy and also pedestrians to know where, really where they're allowed. And some definition of, you know, public space, semi-private space, private space. But the ordinance doesn't allow it unless you, Planning Commission, would make that finding. And so, because the applicant was kinda up in the air and then could test the waters using this, I encouraged him to submit some sketch plans and then talk about that particular item.
And I, can you, can you please approach the podium, um, and confirm? I assume you don't mind if we're commenting on other aspects as well?
No, no, I understand with everything going on earlier.
So was there anything you wanted to add? Introduce yourself, please, but is there anything you wanna add to Megan's intro?
Um, no, thank you, Megan. Uh, my name is Daniel Stocke. It pretty much, it's a pretty small site, it's a hundred by a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty on 12 Mile. And, you know, the primary use is, is apartments or townhouses, which is allowed, so we're just looking at townhouses. But without the setbacks, I'm not, you know, trying to put it right on to the sidewalk. I want a little bit of buffer. Um, you know, the upper stories, or even the first story, could be even further back, like six feet, but the overall, uh, site will be, you know, closer to the two foot to three foot. Cause it's, you know, it's a pretty small site and with parking requirements, um, pretty high. You know, I, I need to maximize square footage for this even to make financial sense. So, just trying to be as transparent with, you know, just squeezing the sides in a little bit, and the front in a little bit. And that's why I just reached out to Megan, the DDA, Matt, um, and that's why I'm here.
Well, we appreciate you being here to discuss this ahead of time. This is, like I said, a great forum for us to be able to provide you just some really informal, uh, first look comments, and, and hopefully give you clear direction for what you plan to, to move forward with in the future. So thank you for taking advantage of the opportunity. Um, we don't have anyone in the audience, but did we receive any communication on this?
No, we did not receive any communication.
Okay. Um, so we'll move on to the Planning Commission. I guess the first question that, and the most important question, is the setback question. Would the Planning Commission be okay if we kinda just went down the line and each person had the opportunity to provide their, their setback opinion? And then any additional comments? That sounds good. Marty, you like to talk first, usually.
I would just like to add that I plan on submitting site plan approval in the next month or so.
Okay.
So this is just a, like, give a feel of me going for it.
Yep. No, no, we're not voting.
Yeah, no, I just-
Each take the opportunity to, to for sure answer your setback question from each of our perspectives, and then maybe provide any additional comments we might have on your sketch plan.
I'm surprised you thought I wanted to talk first. Yeah, I, I, I think as far as a use, I think this is a great use along 12 Mile. And, uh, it's definitely an improvement of, in, over, uh, over what's there now. Proposed front setback. Is entry to a dwelling unit considered a pedestrian space, or is it a private space?
It's not defined in the ordinance.
Okay, I know, I'm just asking-
That's a good answer.
It's probably a rhetorical question.
Right.
I would think any resident, anybody who wanted to live in a townhouse, or whatever you wanna call it, on a main road, would want a little bit of a buffer between, uh, on the first floor especially, between their front wall and their windows and the, um, in the public way out there, the sidewalk. We do a lot of projects, multifamily, we do everything we can to maximize the buffer between the windows of a residence, a dwelling unit, whether it's rental or owned, or whatever, and the, um, the public way. So, my question, is a two to three front sep, two to three foot front setback, is that enough? It's on the north side, is anything gonna grow in there? So that'd be my question. I have no problem with providing it, because, you know, thousands of people walk up and down the sidewalk every day. And, uh, you don't, you don't want people peering in windows and things. I think a buffer is a good idea, for a bit, for a structure, a proposed structure like this. Now, I don't know if we have to, at, when the time comes, do a variance, or-
It sounds like we can modify it, just as part of the site plan.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, you make a finding and you can, you can modify it.
Okay, good, I like that. So my question to you is, do you really think two or three feet is enough? And you don't have to answer that now, so that's something when you come back for a site plan approval. I'd honestly like to see a little bit more, but that's up to you. It's your, it's your building, it's your money.
I, I would like to see five or six, but the, the property's, property line is even one foot before or after, if you think about it, to the sidewalk. So there is still an additional feet on top of that, two or three feet, so yeah. Totally in agreement with you.
What do you plan on doing in the side setbacks?
Um-
I'm just asking. This, this isn't, uh, this isn't-
Well, on the, the, the east side, probably some gas meters and all, cause there's not gonna be anyone adjacent to that site. And then to the west side, um, you know, someone, a court, someone can build right there if they wanted to. So I can't really put anything there if I wanted to. Um, I could build right on the, the property line. I just like giving a little bit of buffer when building, too, so.
That's a driveway. You probably want a big curb or a bunch of bumper posts along there. Okay, and again, that's, I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just asking, you know, think about-
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm pretty transparent.
Gas meters makes a lot of sense. They're big and ugly, but no one's invented a smaller one, so it's a thing we live with. Uh, and the only thing, this will be a site plan, uh, approval issue, but I, you are taking half of that driveway to the south. That's part of your property, right? Does, the, the, the double driveway with that residence to your south on Phillips there?
Um, currently, the duplex that's on the south part of the site does share a driveway with the other duplex.
Okay.
Yes, but I believe he still has enough room, which I can confirm.
That'd be on the survey, or whatever. Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I, in my opinion, I think, I think a proposed front setback is a good idea, and maybe even more. So, um, I have no issue with that.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement. I, I certainly, uh, I kinda look at the, the existence of a setback, kinda defines the difference between a, a residence and a hotel, or something like that. And, and, uh, we're talking about a residence here. Just, uh, not to add, I don't have a whole lot to add, except just to note that, um, on that intersection, um, Hungry Howies has, has a, I think around a two foot setback, I think, in front of their pizza place. And, um, it, it looks like some foliage in front of the, uh, I believe that's a church building across the street. So it's, it's not as if there's gonna be any jarring dissimilarity, uh, created by a, by a setback for this, for this building. There is some, um, there are some features nearby that, um, kind of, uh, allow us to accept a setback at, at that location. And it, it's not gonna stick out like a sore thumb. So, um, I'd be, I'd be inclined to be in favor of it.
Yeah.
I agree, as far as the front setback. I don't have a problem with it pushing back a few feet. It sounds fine. I did have some questions about the rear yard setback, though. Right now, you're showing the dumpster enclosure in the rear yard setback. Is that something that we allow? Do you know, Megan?
You have no regulations about where the dumpster, um, goes.
Just a, just a screen.
Yeah, just, it requires a screen, but it doesn't require it to be in the rear yard or the side yard, or, um, whatnot, so.
And there's, there's no landscape requirements? Does screen means a dumpster enclosure?
The screen means the dumpster enclosure, and so it has to be, I, I believe it has to be a block fence, a, a, a block wall that matches the, um, matches the building, and there are certain things on the, um, enclosure. From what I've seen from previous site plan reviews, usually there is a request, um, at the site plan level to provide landscaping where it's appropriate. So if you feel strongly that that's something that should be there, that should be communicated to the applicant, because that's something you can ask for, is, that is in your site plan standards, um, in terms of the, whether the landscaping, I believe, like, matches the quality. It's a very amorphous phrase.
Yeah.
But it would be a factor.
Yep. So that's one thing I had outlined, that I'm also not crazy about how close that parallel parking is to the, the residence to the south. I don't know if there's, I know you're overparked by four spaces. I don't know how-
Yeah, just the more of the inner person to me, like, where's your guest gonna park? So I can reduce that and do some buffer, for sure.
And then I had, had also looked at the, the, um, on the ChemTech survey, that, the driveway, taking part of that driveway, it doesn't look like on the ChemTech survey that there's a cross-axis easement or anything, but it, it does look like it might be a little bit narrow to the south. But I guess if there's no cross-axis easement, it's not really your concern necessarily. That's all I have.
Lita?
So in, in theory, I like the idea of a front setback. What I don't like is what our ordinance says, is it has to be a defined plaza, outside eating area, or other pedestrian space for us to go with it, right? And I don't think landscaping and steps, or whatever, necessarily qualifies as that. I do think you're also overparked, so I think you have room to back that up. If I look at the DDA guidelines, which are not a rule, but things we'd really like to see, um, that area is our arty area. And it does say that sidewalks can be wider, or that setbacks can happen for sidewalks to be wider, or for art. So throw up a couple sculptures there, and then it's public room, I think. The other thing I will mention is, um, our design guidelines also like, when we're talking about three-story buildings, for that third story to be setback a little bit, so it's not so overwhelming. So if there's a way you can work that in, that would be awesome.
It sounded like more of a suggestion than a need, when just reading it.
Yes, yes.
In Birmingham, it says, you know, ten to fifteen feet. I forget which one it is, but it's very defined, just moving forward.
And then, as far as the side yard setback, the side that, um, the next building is on, I have more of a problem with that, cause a one foot, four inches is really small. So if they, if they were to rebuild and follow our ordinance, that's not wide enough for a person to get in, but it's wide enough for an animal to get in, or a little kid to get in, and, and then that, to me, starts to feel dangerous. So I would suggest on that side, build to the line, on the corner side, you know, throw some right there. That's all I, okay, great.
I agree. I don't mind having a bigger setback. I think it actually makes it look a little better. Cause you said you'll probably go three stories, so it's gonna feel like it's on top of the road anyways. So I have no problem with a setback there. I, and I, I like how you talk about visitor parking, but you do have ten feet there, which, I don't know, you maybe get rid of. People can park on the street unless it's certain hours. Forget the hours. But they- Do you say, you guys know, I have a big driveway? So they- I have a big driveway. So they, uh, you know, something there. I mean, I don't know if we're talking about, like, these are what you're thinking. I don't really like the big black structure, um, just personal taste. If that's what you were thinking of going, they kinda look like, uh, storage containers to me.
I'm going more for the middle one.
Middle.
Or the bottom. Actually, the bottom one is, uh, a building that's being built in Brush Park right now, so.
Yeah, I kinda like the bottom one.
Yeah.
That's my favorite. Just the other ones, to me, look like, uh, storage containers. Don't really know if that's what we were going for. But I, I, I don't mind with the setback. That was just my other comments.
No, appreciate it.
Julie?
I like the idea of the setback. You're on my dog walking route, so, you know. Anytime a building isn't right there, no. Um, I think it'll, if it's, if it was right at the line, it would, it would, it would just be like an imposing wall. So I think it needs that buffer in there.
Daniel?
Yeah, I guess I'll mirror all the, all the other positive comments that have been taken. I, I, I just think it makes complete sense. I think it would look weird if it didn't have a setback. I actually like the aesthetic examples that you provided. I think it's gonna look really great if it's gonna mirror any of these. It definitely gets me excited for that plot of land, and I think, uh, that setback is, is, I'll, I'll mirror Marty. I think you could even go further if you wanted to.
Joe?
Yeah, I think the setback's a good idea. The only thing I, you know, when we review an actual site plan, is there any issue with the traffic signal pole that's there? On the very end unit?
Yeah, it's like, uh, I wanna say like one, maybe a foot and a half, uh, just east of the property line, right on the sidewalk, so. It's not on my property, it's on the sidewalk mainly, but yeah, it's definitely, uh, not the best looking thing.
Whoever's in the end is gonna see it right there, okay. And then is the intent to just, um, I guess it would be on the west side, the non-driveway side, next to the law office? Is that just, um, is, is it just dead ends at your property, or does it go-
Yeah, cause I just don't know who's gonna build there.
Into the, cause it looks like there's a, like an alley or driveway through there.
He just has a big parking lot. Um, I wanna say, let's see, that's twenty, that, that property to the west of me is about forty feet wide. Uh, it's about six to seven hundred square feet the building is, and it's just parking lot afterwards. Don't see that being developed in any fashion. It's just too small of a site as a, as a, as a builder and a, and a designer. I just, I, if anything, I would probably buy it from him and just extend this.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, like, for circulation purposes, if this elevation where it's squared off at the end is gonna match that existing asphalt to basically create one big circular loop in and out of this place, um, ultimately, so. Cause right now, it shows, it's a dual driveway here on Phillips, so.
Yeah, just more of a, I don't own the property and-
Okay.
I would love to, uh, reduce the twenty-four foot drive aisle to fifteen, just have a one-way, but-
Cause the print shop looks like it cuts it off currently.
Yeah.
The current building runs the whole lane.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Were you planning a wall there, or?
It would be a fence.
So people wouldn't go through-
Yeah, I mean, I might have done a little too much on this plan. I'm just, I'm a designer, so I just, I sort of just like-
No, 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 but you weren't-
Envision while I draw, so like, this should just be a big rectangle, like, this is where I'm gonna put the building. But I put the walls, I put the driveways, I put the garages.
Thank you.
No, but it's not gonna go through, like, you'll have a-
No, it would be a curb, and pretty much, it just dents there like six feet, so that first garage on the left can back out easy, so.
But it, they're not gonna be able to drive over to the law office lot, then.
Unless you got a, a nice big truck. No, but I will put a fence there, cause I wanna enclose that whole backyard.
Okay, alright, I think that's-
Yeah, I mean, I have no issues with the setback or anything like that.
Yeah, I think it would be a nice structure to start off what should be done down 12 Mile. So me going, you know, three feet, I mean, three stories, um, would be nice, especially when the whole 12 Mile is pretty wide, the way it is with the sidewalk. So it'd be, it's a pretty good urban ratio to go to three, actually. So, yeah.
All set, Joe?
Yeah.
So you have a hundred percent agreement on the setbacks, cause I completely agree, and I lean more towards Marty's idea of going even a little bit bigger. If you can. I'm glad you brought up the adjacent property. We would love to see some of these properties consolidated, and having a tiny little piece left is really gonna make things challenging down the road. So by all means, if you can do that, that would be wonderful. Are these garages in the back here?
Yeah, a single, I guess, one and a half car garage with a parking space in front of it. It's the only way I can really fit it without having parking spaces and headlights going south- parking spaces and headlights going south at a neighbor. I'd rather have all the headlights going north.
Yes, we like that.
So.
How many bedrooms are you thinking these would be?
Uh, three bed, three bath. I mean, mainly is that third bedroom is really a flex space on the first floor.
That's what I was going to ask. Your first floor space is going to be like a flex space?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. One of the things I want to make sure that we're paying attention to is that transitional buffer in the back. I do like the idea, particularly if it's a three-bedroom, of providing some extra parking spaces. So, I, I don't know what you can do too much in a, in that small landscape area that you've included, but I would, I think, be more in favor of some narrow evergreens like arborvitae's or something, if we can squeeze those in and still fit the parking spaces. And then I also agree with Greg on the elevations. I did not like the top black box.
Okay, noted.
And then with Lisa on incorporating any elements you can of the design guidelines. That's kind of how we see this taking shape. It's not in the ordinance now, but we'd really like to have a continuous any properties that come in for development or redevelopment, that we're meeting those as close as we can. And thank you so much for your interest in investing in the city. This would be a great addition to 12 Mile.
Thank you. I have a small business already. I love Berkeley, so just guys are easy to work with too, so, which is nice.
Great. Do you have any other questions for us?
It's mainly just the setbacks. I probably, depending on my civil, I'll be going in for site plan review next month or the following, if I can get him to do stuff with snow on the ground, so. But yeah, it's mainly just the setbacks, because I don't want to put all this effort in going for site plan review and not know what's going on. So, I'm glad this sketch thing is a thing in the city, so.
My last comment would just be to reach out to your neighbors in the area. Talk to them, let them know what you're planning on doing. Talk through their questions and concerns. We'd rather you guys have the opportunity to hash that out in a little bit more informal setting than us trying to do it here at the meeting.
When he does come back, it would not be an open
A public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
If it's a straight site plan, it wouldn't be a public hearing. We would certainly though welcome any comments if people want to come forward, but they would not receive notices and it wouldn't be noticed in the paper. But we would still encourage you, please reach out to your neighbors.
And there's no variance or rezoning necessary as long as we make the appropriate findings, is that?
For the setback, right.
I would encourage you to consider some space for bicycles.
Yes, there will be. I drew that two weeks ago. It's been a lot of development since. I took away maybe two parking spaces to put more trees on that wall. The public works area is like right behind there, kitty corner back. So, just trying to block that view from people's windows as well. So, yeah, there'll be bicycle parking and, and they all have garages, which is, which is nice, you know.
I'd rather see green than bicycle spaces.
Yeah.
Quite honestly.
And again, there's going to be a lot of bicycle racks being installed in the downtown from the DDA.
On the street, I hope so.
A bike rack that looks like art.
Hmm?
A bike rack that looks like art. I just had to do one of those in a job we did in Oregon, so. They exist.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
That's very good for both of us. Sorry about my government issue.
Oh, wow. Was that your free mask?
It was. Got tired of holding it up.
Have a good evening. Okay, so next that brings us to the calendar dates. I will say right now, I have a conflict. I cannot come to the February meeting. I will be on vacation.
I will as well.
Great. This is going to be a tough one, isn't it?
Sounds like there's some site plans. I know.
So, it's likely the Greenfield site plans would be back. They were resubmitted today. The Provisioning Center came in on Friday technically meeting the deadline. However, you know, it has to go through all the, we sent it out for reviews and we should know in two weeks.
Okay.
So, those two Greenfield retail, okay, well, I talked for two hours about that last time, so I guess I can handle that.
That's, that's my only conflict. Does anyone have any big conflicts?
Our September 27th meeting is the second day of our Shoshana.
I have a conflict. I don't know if we do meetings on Jewish holidays.
Oh, I'm not going to be here May 24th, but
Oh, wow, guys.
You know, we always have these things, so. As long as six people aren't missing in one meeting.
Okay, so it sounds like we may have some smattering of absences. Which we are allowed so many excused absences.
Hope they get approved. It's a tough process.
Submitting for my vacation now.
We're going to be tough next month.
Do you need a motion for this, Megan?
Yes, we need a motion.
I moved to approve the PC meeting dates for the 2022 calendar year.
Support.
Can you call the roll, please?
Yep. Bartis?
Yes.
Dalen?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Choski?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Most passes.
Listen reports. Who has anything to report this evening?
Nothing here.
Nothing? Anything from the DDA?
I did not make it to the last meeting.
Okay.
I got, I got a little bit from the chamber. So, the Art Bash applications are officially on the website and they're working on the permit process with the city. They're planning on moving it from Buckingham to Coolidge and then the Berkeley Street Art Festival Committee's met yesterday and has begun planning. That's all I have.
Well, that's good. I'm glad we're going to have some events up and going. That's great. Okay. Any staff or commissioner comments? No? I would just say I really loved being able to comment on the sketch plan. So, the more we can encourage that, the better.
Everybody should do that.
Well, I think the thing that I like about it the most is that it indicates the willingness to work with the city instead of like, you know, fighting with the city.
And speaking from the, being on the other side of the podium, it is really helpful for the design consultant to have some feedback upfront.
Absolutely. We do it all the time.
Yeah, going through the ordinances. Well, sit down with the city, yes. We do that all the time too, but to be in front of the planning commission is is, is really, is very helpful.
And if it's even more involved, I mean, that's, that's what, that's the kind of thing that also happens in a work session for bigger projects. This is not a major, major project, but I think we had some for La Salle.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, it's always an option. It should be, it should be publicized better in the development community.
Yeah, that's something we should really stress more, but I don't know what you have to do.
I know, but.
To word out.
I have a question. Not that I don't love seeing your face, but do we know where we are or where, with getting a permanent?
So, the deadline has passed for resume submissions. There were some. And not, when I spoke to Matt today, he didn't feel that there were any that he wanted to interview. So, they'll be looking to open it up again and go from there. So, I would say I'm, I'm with you through at least February. So, and then just please let me know what you need, because packets are not something I've done for a long time and I can do them, but, you know, just, it's really important that you have what you need in a timely manner in order to make the decisions that you need to. And if myself or folks from the Community Development Department aren't getting that to you, please let me know.
Appreciate that. I would like a hard copy packet every month, because I don't do the screen thing.
Well, I have Marty, Shiloh, Lisa and Mark.
Basically this end of the table.
And for me, mine was only on, on big site plans, right? I didn't need a packet for everything. What I told Erin is like, when we were dealing with La Salle, that felt like it was too much for me to try and like do all on the computer. But for like everything we had today, I could have done that.
Yeah, for, for site plan approvals, I, I have red marker all over all the sheets, so you can't, on a little screen, it just doesn't work, if I had a little screen.
No, I'm perfectly willing to do that. It was just easier for me and for the staff member who was helping me to just give you everything.
That's perfect. Because then we're not questioning, did we get everything or do we have to do something else? So, that, that's absolutely perfect.
And you will check into, you'll send us an email tomorrow, like I should?
Send an email tomorrow and I also check in with Stan about why you didn't get it.
And then we can just reply back, got it or?
Everybody should, if everybody could please reply back.
But I had, I had access to the drive.
Right.
So, I went in, but I didn't get an email, which is fine. I mean, I was like, it's coming. I'm thinking it's there.
And Mark just told me he'd like large print for everything. I'm not far away either.
Okay, does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Could you call the roll, please, Megan?
Oh, God, I forgot. Okay. Bartis?
Yes.
Dalen?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Choski?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Okay, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Have a good winter.
It's almost February.